Up to the podium, please just state your name and what ward you live in if you live in the city or what town you live in. And you have a five-minute limit.
Hi, my name is Linda Babcock. I'm in the 3rd Ward on Canal Street is where my driveway is. The apartment is originally 23 Farinam Street. This is about the brook on Canal Street. When it collapsed, Mr. Lopez was on duty. I was the one who reported the very first time when we had the problem. Nothing has been done to that brook. The barricades that was along holding it up are down in the brook. There was at one time a safety fence put across there. It's been about a year and a half. That safety fence, which was an orange one, has been removed. So anybody could get down in there. But I don't know if anybody realizes the flooding that could happen with that canal because the canal comes all the way on Canal Street. The house that I owned was originally Bob I. Nellis. It was built back in '42. So we bought the property from him when he had the lumberyard right after it hit burn. And I want to know, at one time FEMA, it was stated that FEMA was going to pick up some of it. Have they?
Okay, good question. So we just got this within the last couple of months, we got all the approvals in through FEMA. It's looking like it's going out to bid in December. FEMA controls a lot of it. They're going to pay for 80% of the project. And they're looking for a spring build. That doesn't mean that the, because I've been dealing with this now for three years, the federal government, you see our bridge and things like that. But what I will do is, Mr. Farr is behind me and he's in charge now.
Right, Mr. Farr was on duty when.
And I'm going to ask him to at least go down tomorrow and take a look at, see what we can do temporarily, all right? But they're looking to go to bid in December and then for a spring build.
Yes, because Orange and Rockland is going to be digging right along that. Find out how much that's going to affect the brook.
Okay.
Because that's very important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Anyone else?
This is not something I feel comfortable doing.
Yeah, relax.
Hi, my name's Lois Harford. I live in Huguenot, but I'm hoping that you can all participate in this. My husband was David Harford, and some of you may have known him. He was born and raised here, graduated in 1968 from Port Jervis High School. And he was a local musician. Some of you might remember Begetzel, the Begetzel Band.
I've heard of it.
They made us very proud. In 1980, they were chosen by the Olympic Committee in Lake Placid to be the house band for the athletes. They were there for the duration of the Winter Olympics in Lake Placid, were in the newspaper and all that kind of stuff. They did a lot of things. My husband passed away, and he and I both were very into animals and rescue and stuff like that. So I have organized a concert in September in the auditorium of the high school. So 718 seats, oldies, nostalgia, that kind of thing. And 100% of the proceeds are going to our Humane Society. And I'm hoping that people can help to disseminate the information. I'm not sure, you know, you guys know a lot of people. As a matter of fact, this isn't the final, but this is.
It's September what?
September 18th, Sunday, September 18th.
At what time?
1 to 5.
And do you have all the people that are participating in it already? Are you looking for participants?
Yes. No, I have four bands, and we're going to have t-shirts for sale, and we're going to have a raffle, and we're going to have door prizes. So I just, and we have an Eventbrite page, I think, and we're about to have a Facebook event page, and everything will be linked from PJHumane.org. I just want everybody's help in spreading the word so we can make this a sellout and raise lots of money for the shelter.
When you, because it's going to be a total fundraising, we definitely can help you promote it. If you just make a, when you get your final, if you could send it to me, scan it to me.
No, that's not, that's not the final, but it's close.
And I got to tell you, you did a great job because when I first read it, I saw, I thought it said Woodstock, and I see it as Woofstock, and that is awesome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just so the mayor knows, the Begetzel was as good as it not very in the shine or not, so.
Thank you for saying that.
He didn't hear him what we did.
Thank you. Where should I send the flyer?
To the Port Jervis, Port Jervis Mayor at gmail dot com.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, thank you very much.
Do you want this back?
You can keep that if you want.
Okay, great.
That's not the final, but it's getting there.
Yeah, and I will do it in two seconds, the final. Perfect.
Send me your contact.
Thank you very much.
We'll help you.
Anyone else? Not hearing from anyone, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the July 25th, 2016 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bobozzo, second by Mr. Foster. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Committee reports, finance and insurance. Ms. Troby.
Okay, the Finance Committee has not met since the last council meeting. The next meeting will be Wednesday, August 17th at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. But we do have bills to pay. So here are some of the bills. In the General Fund, we have $128,474.39. The Water Fund, $15,387.38. The Capital Fund, $59,393.46. For a total of $203,255.23. Some of the bigger bills. Orange and Rockland, July Utilities, $22,849.98. Direct Energy for July Utilities, $4,670.75. Frontier Communications, $4,336.88. And from the Capital Fund, Cloud Harbor and Associates for the clarification upgrade project, $59,347.91. And FedEx Postage, $45.55. And I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Troby, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion.
Item for discussion, just for clarification, the Cloud Harbor and Associates is not the clarification upgrade project. That is for the bridge project and the road widening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some department secretary correspondence, and I only hope it's complete. This was actually addressed in an email to Chief Fuller, and you'll hear why. "Chief Fuller, on 3/14/2016, the City Council approved Excelsior Engine Company #5 Color Guard to attend an event on 8/20/2016. The Color Guard will be presenting the colors in uniform during the pre-game ceremony at PNC Field in Music, Pennsylvania with the Scranton Wilkes-Barre Rail Raider team. The Color Guard is respectively requesting use of U-820, which is the department pickup truck, to transfer its members to and from the event. Sincerely, Bill Warner." Make a motion, we approve that.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bobozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Kelly B. Decker, members of City Council, request to use a fire station, Never Sink Engine Company #1, on behalf of PSA Troop 1173. I believe that's probably Troop 173. It is. Dear Mayor Decker and members of City Council, I was informed that the Boy Scout Troop 173 wished to hold a car wash at Never Sink Engine Company #1 on Saturday, August 6th, 2016. They provided certificate of liability insurance dated 18 July 2016, naming the Port Jervis Fire Department and Never Sink Engine Company #1. Seeing that the Board of Officers' meeting has already passed, Lieutenant David D. Moore, Jr., contacted Chief Frank W. Fuller III last night to obtain permission. The chief instructed lieutenant to provide a letter to the department secretary from his company. Today I was contacted and asked for this information for approval. Please contact Lieutenant Moore, give his phone number and his cellphone number in his email if you have any further questions, concerns, or comments. It should be noted, this event is being held prior to the next meeting of the City Council scheduled for August 8, 2016. Respectfully submitted, William Hor Warner. I make a motion, we approve that as it's already passed."
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Bobozzo. Under discussion, Mr. Siegel, if you could just go back and relate to the chiefs, to my knowledge even from last meeting, I think there were one or two things, and then there's two things now that are happening after the fact that they have to really, they should really be doing beforehand.
Yeah, and.
And not that they're wrong, and not that we wouldn't approve them, but they really should be done before.
Yeah, that's why I try to usually contact you for permission before we use.
And you do, but I think that we need, we need to be on the safe side for the city and just ask them to be more vigilant on approving these things beforehand.
Yeah, I agree. The reason that you're doing this to have insurance coverage, God forbid something happens.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
I will relay that to them tonight.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Dear Mayor Decker, members of City Council, the Port Jervis Fire Department proudly has serving within our ranks 181 dedicated members, approximately 54% of our total membership, who will be celebrating 25 years or more of service in 2016. Nineteen members celebrating their anniversary in August and respective company are Never Sink Engine Company #1, George R. Haas with 36 years, David Mills with 36 years, and Russell Van Sowers with 52 years. Delaware Engine Company #2, John P. Farr with 34 years, Brendan Hess with 43 years, Timothy Mills with 42 years, and David C. Simmons with 45 years. Dallas Rescue and Salvage #3, Randall Avery with 26 years, Richard J. Omato with 34 years, Russell R. Potter with 47 years, and Peter J. Segredo with 43 years. Excelsior Engine Company #5, Timothy J. Simmons with 40 years, Frank W. Fuller, Jr. with 45 years, Michael Myers with 28 years, and John Sardina with 27 years. Tri-State Hose Company #6, Charles Barton with 45 years, Eldrick Grove with 58 years, and James Mills plot, Jr. with 42 years. And Mahakama Cook and Ladder #1, David W. Case with 58 years. Respectfully submitted, William Warner. And I read that for the benefit of those that served the fire department for all those years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I still have some more here, I think. Oh, yeah. Watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, and our webpage, PJNYFD.com for more information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. Due to Labor Day, the next Board of Officers' meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 12th, at the Port Jervis Fire Museum. And I'll repeat that at the next meeting, at September 12th. The next Fire and Emergency Management meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 15th, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Code and Legislative, Mr. Bobozzo.
Thank you, Mayor. The Code Committee last met on August 3rd of last week. Among the items discussed was the proposed event fee, the proposed homestead law, and a proposed law regarding the bagging of leaves within the city. Looks like all three of those local laws will potentially be workshop due to the fact that there seems to be a lot of interest in those particular laws, but we will keep you advised as we move with that. Additionally, pursuant to our last council meeting, the committee did discuss the possibility of altering the redemption fees for dogs running at large within the city of Port Jervis. However, after a fairly brief discussion, the committee decided that there was no need to change those fees at this time. Our next meeting is September 7th, 7 o'clock here in the council chambers. However, before I end the report, I did want to bring an item up for discussion before the council. That is a request for $50,000 to match a $50,000 grant that we had recently received through the efforts of Valerie Majinsky and the CDA. This $50,000 is specifically earmarked for working on code matters within the city. More importantly and more specifically would be zoning issues that are occurring within the city. Since I've been on the council now a little over two and a half years in this stint, we've changed the zoning map a minimum of three times. And it's becoming somewhat apparent that the zoning map may be outdated and may need to be updated. At the same time, through doing the research for the grant and attempting to find ways to do in-kind matches for the grant, we've determined that the city actually does not have a comprehensive plan or master plan. And under the general municipal law in the city, in the state of New York, the entire zoning law of the city of Port Jervis or any municipality is supposed to be based upon its comprehensive plan. Since one does not exist, it puts us in a difficult position. And it also puts us in a difficult position as to applying for grants in the future without having that master plan in place. It's come to my attention through these meetings and through other reports with the Finance Committee that the city has currently made $50,000 more than budgeted on mortgage tax this year, primarily as a result of a couple of large refinances. I would propose that we put the $50,000 toward this project. It would be a shame to have to pass on a $50,000 grant for a project that could take $75,000 to $100,000 to complete upon hiring a consultant to do so. There are a lot of really exciting projects that are underway or about to begin within the city of Port Jervis. I think this is an opportunity to make sure that with the change in the direction of the city, being less railroad or industrial toward being more tourism, I think we need the zoning to be able to support these projects, or else a lot of the dollars that are going to be spent are going to be spent in other communities surrounding Port Jervis, and we're going to miss out on those. So I'm happy to put it out to the council for discussion. I had discussed this with the council previously at Finance, but I am happy to listen to any opinions regarding the matter.
Can you bring in something for motion?
I can. I move that we allot the $50,000 in extra mortgage tax money toward this project as 100% match to the $50,000 we could potentially receive from the county in grant funds.
I'll second it for discussion. Okay, I have a motion and a second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion.
Well, I guess I'll have to go first here. I think it's always a prudent idea if you can find the funds to invest money if you're going to recoup more than you invested and you get something good out of it. And while I'm not a big spender here, I think it's a great idea and I would support it for that reason.
I would have to agree with that, Mr. Bobozzo and Mr. Siegel. I have to fall out of your chair. I would say, even though there are some other projects that we can, or that we might like to invest that $50,000 into, I think that this is more time-sensitive from what I understand, that we have to make this decision. And if we lose out on grant money because we choose to spend it on something else first, that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense because we could always go ahead and do those projects after we do this. But I think this is important, and I think it is, you know, absolutely essential to have the framework, to have the rest of the stuff to move forward. So again, as Mr. Siegel says, $50,000 is a lot of money, however, there are certain things that you really need to do to set yourself up to be successful, and I would support this as one of those measures.
Anyone else?
I also support it. It could enhance our possibilities for new local businesses. It could enhance the development of the Whitewater Park and a few other things like jobs. So I fully support the proposal.
I thought for community development. I do support it. Community development, it's well-needed, it's something that needs to be done. I totally agree. All right, not hearing anyone else. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
And again, the next Code Committee meeting will be September 7th here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you, Mayor. I emailed the minutes of the last DPW meeting to all the members of the council. I'd like to ask for the approval of these minutes at this time.
So I'm moved. I have a motion by Mr. Foster. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bobozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Update, garbage and recycling will be on their normal schedule for the next two weeks. Bag yard debris and tied-up brush will continue to be picked up on the same day as your paper pickup, which is on Fridays. ADA compliant curb cuts continue to be worked on on Fowler Street, so please use caution when traveling in that construction zone. Paving will take place in a few weeks. The next DPW meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 6th, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee, Ms. Henry.
Thank you. Police Committee has not met since our last council meeting, but I would like to congratulate the chief and the police department and everybody who was involved with National Night Out. It was another successful event. And I just wanted to point out that the next Police Committee meeting is August 16th at 7 o'clock. Is that right? Yes. And the council chief. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Liaison, CDA, Ms. Troby.
Okay, the CDA last met on Wednesday, July 27th. We approved financials and went through the director's report, some program updates, possible grants that we might be looking to apply for. We were also given a presentation about a Section 8 homeownership program and first-time homeowner's class. This program provides low-income families an opportunity to own their own homes and leave housing subsidies behind. There are requirements and obligations that would need to be met to apply and maximum terms of assistance. But success rates of this program have been very high across the state, so hopefully we can add some success stories from Port Jervis to that number. More information to come as this program is developed. The next CDA meeting will be Wednesday, August 24th, at 7:00 PM on the second floor of the Recreation Center. That's it.
We must be back in medieval times. Thank you for idea.
White Kings are. Oh, no, they have not met. And that's.
Thank you. ADA, Mr. Foster.
ADA has not met since we last met, but our next meeting is scheduled for September 6th at 6:30 here in the council chambers filing DPW meeting. Thank you.
Housing Authority, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. The last Housing Authority meeting was June 28th. I'm happy to report that Santos Rodriguez is scheduled to be released from Helen Hayes Hospital this Wednesday. I hope that happens. He still needs therapy on his leg, but they think that that can be done at home. And he's been there two months already, so he's really looking forward to coming home. So I'm glad that he's on the mend. And our next meeting is August 23rd at 7:00 PM, Hillside Terrace. And that's all I have. I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Recreation Commission, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The second annual Tri-State Triathlon was held yesterday morning, August 7th, at the West End Beach. It's a great morning with 56 participants challenging themselves in a 500-meter swim, 10-mile bike, and 5K run. Congratulations to all the participants. The overall male winner was John McWork with a time of 1 hour, 7 minutes, and 34 seconds. The overall female winner was Alexandra Zukovich with a time of 1 hour, 20 minutes, and 46 seconds. Also, congratulations to our very own billing official, David Rivera, who completed the race in a time of 1 hour, 29 minutes, 7 seconds, placing 13th overall. Port Jervis natives Brian Hammond, Todd Depew, Rosie Forbes, and Heather Blot-Jones also competed in yesterday's race. Brian Hammond finished fourth overall. Thank you to all volunteers and volunteer fire departments for their help with the race. Without the volunteers, this race would not take place. Pictures and complete results can be found on our Facebook page. The Summer Concert Series at Riverside Park continues this Thursday, August 11th, when the Carl Richards Band takes the stage. Concert starts at 7:00 PM and ends straight. Come down and enjoy the music. The Rich Wilson Concert that was scheduled on July 28th due to rain has been rescheduled for Wednesday, August 24th at 7:00. Also, this Thursday, August 11th, will be holding our annual Summer Olympics at the Riverside Park. This event will start at 10:00 AM. Children's ages seven and up can participate in relay races, basketball, can-can, water-balloon toss, super slip-and-side, and this year, kids get the chance to dunk at supervisor in a dunk tank. Kids will be served lunch as well, free of charge. The summer program ends on Friday, August 19th. The youth center will be open after August 19th, and for all the remainder of the summer, Monday through Friday, 11 to 3:00. West End Beach is open Monday through Thursday, Friday through Saturday, and Sunday from 12 to 6:00 PM. The beach is closed Tuesdays and Wednesdays. The beach will close for season on August 21st. The next outdoor movie at Riverside Park is scheduled for Wednesday, August 17th, at 8:00 PM. Movie will be Inside Out. Thank you to First Assembly of God Church for co-sponsoring this event. Tickets will remain for our field trip to the Scranton Rail Raiders baseball game next Thursday, August 18th. Tickets, including transportation, are only $25 a person. Our next Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 17th, at 6:00 PM at the youth center. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tourism, Mr. Belcher.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tourism Board hasn't met since our last meeting, but we've been, the Tourism Board's been working on the finalization of the Fall Foliates Festival, which will be held September 25th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM in the downtown area of Port Jervis. As you can see, we have many opportunities for entertainment. We have vendors, live music, scarecrow contest, some food vendors, the Ronin Railroad, Pitting Zoo, and many more surprises. Application deadline for vendors to file their application will be August 25th, 2016, and there will be no exceptions. No refunds will be given due to vendor cancellation, poor weather, or attendance factors. So the applications are available on the Port Jervis City website at www.portjervisny.org. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Zoning Board, Ms. Randazzo.
The Zoning Board has not met. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 6th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Planning Board?
Planning Board, the next meeting is scheduled next Tuesday, August 16th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. There will be public hearings held on 298 East Main Street, 109 West Main Street, and 134 and 1/2 Jersey Avenue. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Plumbing, electrical. Oh, plumbing and electrical.
I shouldn't have mentioned this under code, but the Code Committee recently discussed a correspondence that was sent from the county to the Electrical Board relating to the exploration of the potential for a reciprocal county license for electricians. The entirety of the Electrical Board does not like the idea, and the Code Committee did not like it much either, so the city of Port Jervis will not be exploring the possibility of a reciprocal county electrical license. That being said, the Plumbing and Electrical Boards are tentatively scheduled to meet at 6:30 and 6:45 respectively on Wednesday, September 7th, provided there is business for the boards to discuss. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Senior Advisory, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with the senior housing representatives and residents during the month as I normally do. There's nothing significant to report. However, the Meals on Wheels program is in serious decline. Two routes that were just combined that put me out of the job.
I can put you out of the job, you volunteer.
Well, now I'm a substitute. But anyway, those two routes probably had 40 or so people, and they're down to eight and three. I guess what I'm saying is I hope that when the county takes. takes us over, that they try to bring this back. This is a very valuable program, that they don't seem to be reaching out-